Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. And everybody who watches, good luck with your reading. So the board has returned from the executive session. Tonight, we are at our reorganization meeting, which means that I'd like to make a motion to approve the reorganization agenda as presented.
Motion second.
Law paper. My next order of business is to administer the oath of office to the newly elected board trustees for the three-year term, July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. Alexis Bernard, can you stand up, please?
If you have any more help.
Oh, no. Let me take the oath first. Okay. I, Alexis Bernard, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education trustee for the Hendrick Hudson Central School District according to the best of my ability, effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
Congratulations. Our next trustee is Allison Hubin. Will you please stand through the oath of office?
I, Allison Hubin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education trustee for the Hendrick Hudson Central School District according to the best of my ability, effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
Our next is Erica Mills. She's not here tonight. When she returns, she'll be able to go to the office. And then our next person is Chloe Hazeltime, who are being our new...
I, Chloe Hazeltime, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I faithfully discharge the duties of student member of the board for the Hendrick Hudson Central School District according to the best of my ability, effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Congratulations, Chloe. Chloe, thank you. Next order of business is... Is the nominations of the Board of Education for president of the board. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Amelia Samuel.
Is there any other nominations? For president? No? Okay. Can I make a motion to nominate Amelia Samuel as Board Education president?
Motion to approve.
Second? Okay. All in favor? I'm going to show the oath of office to Amelia Samuel, Board President.
I, Amelia Samuel, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of... Of Board President for the Hendrick Hudson School District according to the best of my ability, effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Our next order of business is for Vice President of the Board. Do I have any nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education?
I'd like to nominate Tameka Teacher.
Are there any other nominations? No? Can I get a motion for Tameka Teacher to be Vice President of the Board of Education?
Motion.
Second? Let's get all in favor? Congratulations, Tameka.
I, Amelia Samuel, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President for the Hendrick Hudson Central School District according to the best of my ability, effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
All right. Our next order of business is for our new president to take over the meeting. Amelia Samuel, now looking down in this spot, I'll move back to my seat. I'm going to administer the oath of office to Mike and myself. Do I say? Oh, thank you. Do I say? I'd like to now offer the oath of office to the superintendent of schools, Mr. Michael Tronley.
Thank you, President Samuel. I, Michael Tronley, do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the State of New York, and I faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent for the Hendrick Hudson Central School District according to the best of my ability, effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
I'd like to now also do the oath of office to our school clerk, district clerk, Ms. Carmen Katch.
Hi, Carmen Katch. Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of district according for the Hendrick Hudson Central School District according to the best of my ability, effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Point of flag, which President Samuel. I'd just like to take a moment to explain while we're transitioning here to the... The purpose, because we do have youngsters in our midst, and we want to make sure that they have an understanding of what we're doing tonight. Thank you all for being here and supporting your family members and for taking part in this evening event with us. So tonight's meeting represents more than just the official, first official gathering of the Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year. It also serves, thank you, as the annual reorganization meeting. And that sounds more boring than it actually is, because if you watch what occurs over the next few minutes, this is a meeting that is required by New York state law. And this important meeting does what you just saw, which is reaffirms leadership roles, will adopt key resolutions, will set the tone for the school year ahead. And it really underscores the importance of transparent, orderly, and collaborative planning and leadership at the highest levels of district governance. So the transparency of a Board of Education is that it conducts its business in public. And what you just saw is a transfer, the oncoming of a new board to guide this entity, this body, through the next school year. So congratulations to our new president, Vice President, and to our new board members and to our speaking exec official member.
So I'd like to make a motion of approval for the appointments.
Motion.
All in favor? So I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of all of the items under 7.1 to 7.3. Does anybody have anything that they want to pull from those appointments? We have a motion for approval for 7.1 through 7.3.
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Next, we have on the agenda the reorganization consent agenda items. Is there anything under the reorg consent agenda items that anybody would like to pull? Can I have a motion for approval for the reorganization consent agenda items that is posted?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Moving on to... Item 10, that is our regular meeting agenda. And is there anything anybody needs to remove from the regular meeting agenda? Can I have a motion for approval for our agenda?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Ms. Katch, do we have any appointments, comments for non-agenda items?
We do not tonight.
My daughter would like to... Moving on to our consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Yes?
I would like to remove 12.1 general, particularly the building use agenda. 12.2 fiscal, in particular, the approval of terms and conditions of employment for the Transitional Administrator for Physical Education, Health, and Athletics, and 12.3 professional personnel agenda.
Does anybody have anything else they want to remove? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 12.1? Building use, 12.2, the transitional piece, and 12.3, the professional... All in favor?
So 12.1, in particular, the building use part, it's because I'm personally listed, and I just didn't want to vote on my own request.
So can we get approval for consent agenda item 12.1 building use one?
Motion.
All in favor?
For 12.2 fiscal, I'm going to ask Mr. Tronley to speak to the...
So the reason behind pulling those two items from our consent agenda is a celebratory nature. We have this evening the chance to welcome on two fantastic new colleagues to our Hendrick Hudson team and family. And so we're going to take a moment to recognize those individuals before the board takes action on the recommendation to have them join our team. So we are joined this evening by Mr. Bo Morky, who will be, as of October 1st, our Transitional Administrator of K-312 Physical Education, Health, and Athletics. Mr. Morky will work alongside Mr. Tom Baker through December 31st, before stepping into the full athletic director role in January. Bo has extensive background in athletics, leadership, and will, I truly believe, help move our district programs forward in innovative and student-focused ways. So this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Morky to come in and address the board and the community.
Thank you, board. Thank you, Mr. Tronley, for having me here to honor. Really appreciate the offer to come tonight and speak. I apologize that my wife and two little kids couldn't make it, but when I dropped the bomb of, you know, dropping everything you get here, she looked at me like, nope, not happening. So I had to agree, or else we wouldn't be here tonight, just a little bit. But I really appreciate the opportunity to be someone who leads our athletic program. When I use that word "lead," I use it with the idea behind service. And I feel, once I begin learning from the legend of Mr. Baker first, and then once I start January 1st, I'm going to be here to serve our students first, serving them, serving the district, serving our community, and serving everyone who's here. So again, thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for inviting me tonight, and I really appreciate it.
So at this time, I would like to recommend the board take action to vote on my recommendation to have Mr. Morky serve as our Transitional Director of Athletics and also our Full-Time Director of Athletics beginning January 1st.
Motion to approve?
Second?
All in favor?
So at the same time, we are pleased to welcome Ms. Lisa Martino Alves and her family here this evening as the new principal of Hendrick Hudson High School. With more than 20 years of experience in education and a deep commitment to student-centered leadership, Lisa brings a wealth of knowledge and energy to this critical role. And we're very happy to have Lisa come and introduce herself to the Hendrick Hudson community.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Tronley, trustees. Thank you for inviting me here tonight, inviting my family, so many families, and members of the Hendrick Hudson community are here. I want to thank you so deeply for this great honor, this privilege to be welcomed into your community, to support the great work that has been happening in this district, but especially in the Hen-Hud High School. I'm really so thrilled. Everyone I meet has been talking about the great work that is going on. I'm excited to jump right in and meet more members of the community and just continue alongside you, partner with you, to really see the vision that we know is there within our school to really provide opportunities for our young people to engage in their educational endeavors, think about their future plans, and to really just open up to the possibilities for their future. And I'm here with you to do that. I can't wait to meet more of you. So please, come say hello, join me in this. And I just really want to thank you all so much for having me here. And I'll see you, I'll continue to see you, because I'll be around.
So, members of the Board of Education, I am pleased to recommend Ms. Lisa Martino Alves to the position of Hendrick Hudson Central School District in accordance with the personnel agenda as stated.
Motion to approve the consent agenda 12.3. That's due? All in favor?
Just a few words before we turn it back over to our meeting. I'm so happy that so many youngsters and community members are here to celebrate, because when we do welcome new members to our staff, to our, as employees to the district, as teammates, we do exist here to serve the students and the community. And to be able to share this experience with you, I think, is a testament to our new additions to the staff. But it also demonstrates the expectations that we have to our new members. And I know that Lisa and Bo, we would not have put our trust in you if we did not think you could live up to those expectations. So we look forward to supporting you. We look forward to the work you're going to do. And thank you for joining us this evening. So I'll turn it back over to President Samuel.
Thank you. Carmen, do you...
Sorry, I forgot to do my standard. Everybody is more than welcome to stay for the remainder of a thrilling meeting if you're interested in court governance and what we're doing here. And we can give you community service hours, students, if you want to stay. Or you can choose this evening, this time, to go enjoy the rainy storm and the lightning bugs. And we'll take about a two minute... I recommend that we do take a motion to take a two-minute break to extend congratulations.
Motion to take a break? Second? All in favor? Thank you for allowing us to take a break, and the board is back to continue. Ms. Katch, do we have any audience members who would like to make a comment on agenda items?
Can we just make a motion to open?
Oh, can I have a motion to reopen the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Carmen, do we have any audience members?
We do not.
Oh.
Thank you for allowing us to take a break, and the board is back to continue. Ms. Koch, do we have any audience members who would like to make a comment on agenda items?
Can we just make a motion to open?
Oh, can I have a motion to reopen the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Carmen, do we have any audience members?
We do not.
Oh. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Tremblay for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Silverman, and welcome to trustee Silverman and trustee Dietrich to your leadership positions, thanking trustee Silverman and trustee Mills for their previous service, welcoming our new Board of Education members, our returning Board of Education members to new terms, and our student ex officio member, as well as welcoming new members to our staff. We also should highlight several key leadership transitions within our district as well. If you are looking at the table, you also see that we have Ms. Lauren Scollins in her new role as our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. This is day one. So you've spoken in depth, but we need to, again, Lauren brings a deep knowledge of our district and a clear charge from me to strengthen our curricular alignment, enhance our MTSS protocols, and to build strong transformative relationships with students, staff, and families, and I know that her leadership will help ensure coherence and improvement across our instructional program, so welcome, Lauren, to the table, and thank you for already doing the work of the district, Lauren, and you'll see in a second, but all of our cabinet members, I'm extremely proud of for the leadership they gave at our administrative retreat, which I'll touch on in more detail. So I'm also proud to share that on this evening's consent agenda, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Leadership Development, Dr. Steve Garcia, was granted tenure at this evening's meeting, and this milestone is a testament to his leadership and an unwavering commitment to recruiting, hiring, supporting, and retaining the next generation of educators in the Hendrick Hudson Central School District. Steve has always been an inspiration to me from his perspective that we impact generational change upon our students by providing them the best and most highly qualified educators. So Steve, thank you for your commitment to us, and we return that favor by giving the commitment to you, so please join me and congratulate him.
Any words? You know, I always have some. Six times a charm? Yeah, this is six times, actually, I've received tenure, which is, I never expected it to happen again, to be honest with you, but I appreciate the board for recognizing that. It's been a pleasure. I mean, I just want to say quickly, I don't have a report tonight, but this is my one year anniversary, being part of the Hendrick Hudson School District. So much has sort of changed in that short period of time, and I didn't expect, I guess, as many changes per se, but I think that the best thing that we can do, as Mike alluded to, as a school district, is make sure that whoever we bring into the school district, whether they are custodial staff, maintenance staff, clerical staff, if it's principals, teachers, anyone who's touching the lives of children, it's the most important thing we can do besides safety and security. Who we bring in will change the course of the district, who we bring in will also touch generations of children in this school district. I've never been really part of a system where, just coincidentally, we have a wave of retirements, right? And that's happening across districts, across the state, but here it kind of happened in one shot, and we also have teacher retirements, so it's just the best opportunity to make sure that whoever we invite to work with us, that we do our due diligence, and I'm really excited about the team, which I think that Mr. Tremblay has set up. To be honest with you, what I, what we stepped into, I think July 1 in 2024 is different than today, and that's a good thing, and I'm proud of the work that we've done with the administrators here and the teachers here and the community, who was so involved with stakeholder committees and surveys, looking for the next generation of leadership in this district. And I'm just happy to have been part of that, I think that was my charge, and I know we're not done, but I'm just impressed with the quality that we've attracted to this district, and in such a short period of time, I think we're able to really start making some changes. And that's hard for people at times, and some change is good, some change is bad, but really looking to be more forward-thinking, and I think we're in the right direction. So thank you for helping me be part of that.
And congratulations to you, and we will also celebrate Steve again with our other tenure recipients at the end of the year, which Steve is in charge of preparing these celebrations. Also want to recognize that we still have on our team Ms. Jill Figarella in a different role. Ms. Figarella, as of today, her first day is as Assistant to the Superintendent for Financial Continuity Controls. Yes, I came up with that name, I'm quite proud of it. Jill's position is a position that came about as a recommendation from an internal audit as to how we can better improve our financial and business operations. Jill's primarily, primary role will be to assist our new Superintendent for Business, Ms. Kimberly Roaring, who starts on the 14th of July, to transition into that role to maintain continuity. At the same time, it will allow Ms. Roaring to focus on what I believe is most important of any new leader in a school district or any new leader in general, is to build relationships with the community and with our stakeholders, and at the same time, we know that the business office never sleeps, so that, so that Ms. Roaring can begin to build those relationships and transition, and Ms. Figarella will continue to ensure that there is a close monitoring and improvements of our business office operations. So, Ms. Figarella, welcome, and thank you for spending more time with us.
Thank you.
So we touched upon, this is the time of year that hopefully many individuals are relaxing, re-engaging, recharging, taking time to enjoy the slower time of the summer that often comes with that, but in our school district, our, we're already beginning to plan for the return of students in the fall, because that is the most wonderful time of the year. I always think of that Staples commercial where they sing, it's the most wonderful time of year. I'll try to sing for you, turn off the two people that are probably on the YouTube channel right now watching this stream, but I always get a kick out of that, but it is the most wonderful time of the year, because that is why we exist as a school system, is to serve the students, but we're already getting ready to welcome them back. As an example of that, we spent the last two days with our administrative team gathering to build forward-thinking and student-focused administrative approach to next year. So the past two days, our administrators gathered to shape our collective directions, where we aligned district building and departmental goals, our strategic plan, which we're presenting later to the Board of Education and the community. Our administrators participated in comprehensive crisis tabletop response exercise led by our partners at Alteris, so you can see that we had student safety in mind. We were making sure that all of our administrators were recertified to conduct classroom observations, to make sure that they can provide feedback on the instructional environment within our classroom. They engaged in the MTSS training, which is the multi-tiered systems of support, it's how we support our learners through intervention should they be struggling with initial instruction, and also how we support them as whole students and not just learners. And we also took time to collaboratively plan our calendars with professional learning, other than outside of holidays and contractual obligations. Professional learning was the focus, and we built around that. We looked at communications and key logistical needs of the year ahead. So we have another day where all administrators will gather for a focused time as a team on August 21st, to really make sure we're ready for reopening, but every day that our administrators are in, they are planning for that initial welcome back of students too, so we thank them for their efforts. In support of that retreat, a huge, a special thank you goes out to our partners and host of the Hendrick Hudson Free Library, who graciously welcomed us for part of the retreat and put up with me not directing people to put their cans in the recycling bins, so we spent some time making sure that we did that in our sustainability efforts. Their hospitality, they truly are great partners. Not only do they support the community in a partnership with us, but they host a number of our events, so we cannot, we cannot say how thankful we are for that. They, they gave us the perfect environment for our retreat and also allowed us to have a little fun in the library. One of the highlights that we engaged in, Ms. Joy led our administrators a little bit of team building, but also modeled an instructional technology tool that could, that creates virtual scavenger hunts, so if you can think of a scavenger hunt inside of a classroom, whether they're looking for content knowledge, team building, building cross-grade connections or culture and climate, we demonstrate, Ms. Joy demonstrated this to our administrators. And so the library was a buzz with, or honking with a number of our administrators going on a goose chase. I don't know how I can fit that into other metaphors, because each team of our highly competitive administrators was trying to win the coveted prize that Letha gave to us, which was a box of snacks, and so it was a sight to see where individuals were running around trying to find historical markers, playing with musical instruments, reserved rooms, but just testing out the tool, but also a way for our administrators to have a little fun, connect as colleagues, and remind ourselves that we are humans first and we need to focus on that. So we extend our thanks to the library staff and offer an apology to any patrons who may have been surprised by the spirited energy in the stacks that day. At the heart of that retreat, I expressed that my theme for this year that we will cohes around is actions for the future. This theme was not just introduced, but we tried to weave it into every session and conversation that we had, and we would do so in our efforts going forward into the year, and so you can see that Greg has on the slide what that actually means. I always start with our mission, and we want to do everything that we, everything that we do, we align to our mission, and so we often talk about hope for the future, and hope is a key attribute of being human. Hope helps us to have, to sustain hard times, hope helps keep inspiration, however, it also must be balanced with action, especially when it comes to our students. We have such little time to make a positive impact on our students that we can't just remain in the hopeful stage, we have to act on doing good things for our students. So that is my theme for the upcoming school year. This theme challenges us to move from conversation to concrete action, aligning what we say with what we do, and we will ground our work this year into five, five guiding commitments that will shape our approach, and so we want to take our vision into action. We will implement what we commit to, we will ensure that our students achieve their maximum potential, we will build trust through follow-through. This comes from the mindset that credibility comes from consistent and visible leadership. We will approach decision-making in the collaborative nature and make sure that we have measurable outcomes when we do anything, and we also want to always keep in mind that instructional excellence is our, is the, is the mountain top that we are seeking to strive for, and we will always remain focused on the future. You hear me joke around saying that in September, I'm always saying it's almost June, or in June, I say it's almost September. Well, to be honest, this June, we are actually planning for next June already, because if we don't keep our eyes towards a continuous cycle of improvement and movement, we are doing our students a disservice. So these five commitments will provide a shared framework together, decisions, our leadership, and support our students and staff across all schools and departments. I do want to extend a sincere thanks to Ms. Carmen Koch and Jill Figarella for their time, coordination, and attention to detail for organizing tonight's organizational meeting, because it may have gone smoothly, other than the parts where I'm speaking and quickly, but the amount of work and the amount of benefit that comes from the resolutions that you just acted upon allows the district to do its day-to-day operations. Without the board's authorization to do those things, we would be mired in waiting for additional meetings to get the work done, and as I just said, we don't have time to wait to support our students, so thank you for that. So as we begin this new year and a new board term in service of our students, I thank you again for your support, your partnership, and your commitment to Hendrick Hudson. I look forward to a year ahead with purpose, clarity, and a deep sense of shared responsibility for the success of all students. At this time, there are no questions requiring follow-up from our previous meetings. My son said he was playing, my wife sent me a text, my son is supposed to be watching tonight, but he's playing Fortnite Blitz, and he wanted me to share with everybody that he got a Victory Royale on his own. I don't know what that means, but it sounds impressive, and there are no other updates from the cabinet, so I'll turn back with the president.
Thank you. It's time for our policy readings. We have five policies, we call it their second reading.
What a privilege. I'd like to let the cabinet be excused this evening, this time this evening, because they have put in a lot of work, and it's only Tuesday.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You have to stay, Cory. It's okay.
Yeah, it's all we dress.
I dress.
She dresses.
I'm gonna just tell my night.
Oh, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Last to be at NABE.
I'll be 3:30 in the morning.
I'll make sure you're there.
I'll be there.
So the first policy we have tonight is a second reading of policy 5300, Code of Conduct. The Hendrick Hudson School District.
Motion to adjourn reading.
Second. All in favor? Thank you. This is mandatory to be approved here.
Yes, so recapping, this is the second reading. Work on revising this or having input on this began way back in January of 2025, where we asked administrators to take it to their site-based teams, we had the administrators take a look at themselves, we also had the district shared decision-making committee take a look at it, and the fruits of that labor, and also a public comment period and a public hearing are before this meeting, where we're recommending that this is adoption in its second and final form.
Motion for approval of policy 5300, Code of Conduct. Second. All in favor? Okay, that brings us to the second reading of policy 2121, Board Member Qualifications. The qualifications of a board member. Second. All in favor? So you guys first read this, I believe, then on June 18th, was the last time we did these, so just to recap again of these policies, this was a, just an update on line three there, so just clarify what it means to be a resident, we continuously and without interruption. And this is required by New York's sacred, is it there? This one is not, it's not required, it's just a notice. Motion to approve policy 2121. Second. All in favor? Okay, that brings us to the second reading of policy 4810, Teaching About Controversial Issues. The Board of Education recognizes. Second. All in favor?
What a privilege. So I do want to be mindful that from our student ex officio member, this policy recognizes that our students deserve a rigorous and thought-provoking instructional environment, where there will be some matters, when developmentally appropriate, that there might be issues that have some controversy behind them, and it provides our instructional staff with the framework on how to do that appropriately, and at its heart, it's for our instructional staff to not shy away from these topics. When appropriate, they can be delivered in a developmentally appropriate way, for instance, what might be delivered in a high school debate class or political science unit might be different than what is in an eighth grade social studies unit. So just some things to consider, and it gives our teachers guidance, so that our students can have those deep conversations that lead to deeper learning in an environment that is free from teacher bias, that allows our students to develop their own thoughts and analysis on those types of issues.
I mean, they have a lot of conversation on this one when we were writing it to make sure that we included, that it needed to be related to the curriculum, so I'll talk about math, as you know, it's my favorite thing, that probably would not be the classroom unless it was appropriate, where certain maybe current events you would be discussing unless it was relating to the, our math curriculum at the, at the time.
But in a math class, we could always use a, prove A, proof is wrong, the Euclid infinite primes to prove that it actually exists as a controversial, address that. Sorry math teachers about that.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Tremblay, just because Chloe's here, and maybe she's not familiar with why we leave every reading, I feel like sometimes people don't know the process that goes on beforehand, so maybe we can explain to her, so it doesn't seem like we're just rushing through, like there's a whole kind of thing.
I would defer to our president, who has been on policy for a year, as she has some pretty good experience.
Two years. So each time we approve a policy, it goes through two readings. We do one reading at a meeting, it's called the first reading, and that's when we are gaining feedback from our team and any audience members, so they would be open to sending emails or reaching out to the board to provide feedback and input, so we will, unless it's something that is needed immediately, which we've only used once or twice, we would wait for that two-week period for the next meeting to then have a second reading, and that's where we would present any changes we would have made to the policy, and then that would be when we would approve it.
that would be when we would approve it.
So is this the one from last year?
This is from, all these five that you're seeing are from June 18th, the June 18th meeting. They were presented first during that meeting.
I was talking about the vacuum.
So we just don't do the speed through the whole thing because it's posted. So we read, after the first reading, we always make a point to go like, I mean, reading all this is a lot, so we'll give a digest as to what the meat of that policy is.
Like, but if this one is about like what can and can't be taught or discussed in schools, so we just like say like, oh, we all approve of this?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So we're approving. A lot of the policies are a little broad and then you'll see that some policies then have what's called a regulation and that will go into the rules a little bit more. And then some will have an exhibit, which would be like if it needed like a follow-up letter or something, it would have a sample letter that we would use.
I think more what I also wanted you to explain to Alison also is like they, they spend a lot of time in the committee, like talking about this stuff and coming up with, and so it's when again, by the time it gets here or it's already been posted on the, on the agenda and they've already thought it through. So, you know, you'll get into like the groove of when things are posted on the agenda, like, you know.
They'll read it, they'll send questions.
You read it, you know, you'll read it ahead of time. Like this is not the first time that you should be seeing it at that point. So there's really no point in reading through the whole thing and maybe it just takes up time.
And the board will always send questions. So every week we ask for any input from the board of questions about anything from the agenda. So we will get sometimes very specific questions about policies, so we'll have those discussions.
Just because this is definitely one that does matter a lot.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's on. No, you just turned it off. Let's still, press it again for a little bit longer.
All right, I'll just stop that. Does Chloe have the opportunity to send questions ahead of time? Is that part of her role? Maybe something we should clarify. Like she sees the agenda and she wants to understand something, who is she emailing?
Sure. We can discuss that, but Chloe, wouldn't the, Ms. Koch normally post the agenda on Thursdays?
Okay. I'm included her.
And you're included on that, on the email that says it's live. If you go to your board docs application, if you have any questions, you can send them to me and we'll make sure that they're answered for you. Because the, the purpose of you being here is for a student voice to be considered. So to piggyback on what I said earlier, the board's work, the work of the board and the transparency of the board is that it does its business in public.
Yeah.
There, at times the board may, to get the enormous amount of work that the board does, part of the thing that they can do is authorize subcommittees to be established. One of those committees is policy that does some of the nitty-gritty work and makes a recommendation to the board, but even if the policy's spent 100 hours on a policy, until it becomes adopted by the board, that policy does not come into effect.
Got it. And like I said, we, we ask for feedback. So if someone has a question, like if a board member has a question, we will answer it, but then we sometimes will say, can you ask that at the table? Because sometimes those clarifying questions, if a board member had a question on it, we're going to assume that a community member might have. And in the same breath, you don't have to, if you think of a question at the table that you didn't think of beforehand, you're allowed to ask that as well.
Okay, okay.
And it, sometimes if we know, we'll keep certain cabinet members here as well, like technology, for example, we just recently did a bunch of technology policies. We just, we would, we ask Anita to stay or like Chris, when we were going through some, we'll ask him to stay in case anyone came up with questions at the table we needed to clarify on. So does anybody have questions on policy 4810? Motion to approve policy 4810, teaching about controversial issues.
Second.
All in favor? So now here we have second reading of policy 4511R, regular and/or instructional resource selection and adoption regulation. The Board of Education policy entitled.
Second.
All in favor?
Point of privilege. Regulation is, is really the plain language version of a board's policy statement. So once the board is done conducting its full policy review, the superintendent, if you notice in a lot of these policies that are adopted, you'll see a blurb in there that says the board charges the superintendent with developing regulations. Some regulations come from our policy, our policy vendor, the vendor that advises us on policies, the program that they provide, they come with regulations pre-populated. Others, the district will develop on their own once the policy review has been completed. So this regulation is what our administrative team and our teachers, if it impacts them, that is the plain language step, often step-by-step guide on how they implement the policy that the board has adopted. Thank you.
I do have a question about this one before we approve it. I know we just did the policy 4511 previously. This is the regulation. Should we have changed the word textbook to instructional resource throughout the policy, throughout the regulation?
That's very recent.
Yeah, because sometimes it's digital. And I know we had this conversation, we had this conversation when we were doing the policy.
There's a lot of textbooks.
There's a lot of textbooks in there.
Perhaps we could, we could approve this with more changes.
With those changes, yes.
So we'll, we'll make sure that we approve it.
Instructional textbook.
Textbook, everybody see textbook.
Instructional resources.
Yes.
And we use that specific language because we wanted to, we know that our teachers are dynamic and they don't just rely on a textbook to provide instruction, but it'll, they also utilize other resources.
And I also just want to point out here, if you notice the very first paragraph says that the Board of Education assumes full responsibilities for approving. I just wanted to clarify what that meant as well. We're approving once it gets to us. If you look at the process down below, that includes the stakeholders, the committee that's doing that, the administrators, that's all coming, that's all being done before it gets to the board. The board is getting that final recommendation asking for those instructional resources. We are not selecting it. I don't even think we're anywhere in that process till it gets to the end for approving from there.
So I believe the policy, the first line of the policy itself echoes that and says the board is responsible but delegates their authority.
Yes. Motion to approve policy 4511R with the changes of textbook becoming instructional resource.
Second.
All in favor? And then last we have the second reading of policy 4511E, which is an exhibit, curricular, and/or instructional resource selection and adoption exhibit. Textbook evaluation form, reviewers.
The board should.
Second. All in favor?
And so I assume it's the sense of the board, sorry. I assume it's the sense of the board that we would change the textbook or the, here to match the instructional resources.
Yes. So this is an example of an exhibit. So this would be the actual form that the committee is using when they're going through the process of selecting and reviewing. So this way they will use this and this was, I'm assuming would be submitted to the administrator and/or superintendent or the, does it mean?
Does it mean? We would, we would definitely run this by Ms. Collins in her role. She does have the curriculum committee, which this would be a shared decision-making committee that could utilize, that would utilize this to help make recommendations.
Anyone have questions on policy 4511E? Motion to approve policy 4511E with the changes to from textbook to instructional resource?
Second.
All in favor? And that brings us to board comments and/or new business.
Welcome to the board. Do you have any new business that you'd like to bring up?
No, I don't have questions. I just think I should have read the thing before. I, I'm gonna read it now. I didn't know I had to.
It's all a learning process.
No, because that is definitely something that I think is super important, especially now with like, especially obviously we're high school, but higher-ups with colleges and current events, I think it's important to look at what can and can't be taught in schools. And I think that a lot of kids may be, well, I know the kids that at least have been in class would value what is being taught and especially this year I took a class that was history through film. So that's like all about types of movies. And I think I watched, and obviously it's elected and whatever, but I think classes like that are really important because the movies I watched were really important to watch, so.
I would say even if you, when you go home, if you read these policies and you have questions, I would say definitely reach out.
Yeah.
And if it requires further discussion, we can always bring it back to the table as needed.
And Chloe, you were a trailblazer in terms of, this is the first for us in a couple of years, I believe. I believe maybe a few years ago, there was a student ex officio member, but we're revisiting that practice. And so you, we may, your role may evolve on the board over time, whereas you may decide that you want to give a report to, such as student functions and things that the student body is doing so that the community is aware as well.
Yeah.
So those are all things, it's nice to start in the summer because you do, hopefully you have a little bit more free time.
Yeah.
And we can, you can get used to the flow of the meeting, the formality of the meeting and see where you might be with your managers, have a student voice interjected.
Yeah. And I think it'll be good for us to kind of just put together something for them so that we can reference the stages of things, like where to find board docs and how to kind of navigate through it and kind of just give people the points of things as well. So we'll work on that.
Yeah, I think a lot of it is like, and even when you said that, and I was like, oh, wow, that's important. Like I think it's like, a lot of kids would agree with me, think it's important and like do value it, but I think it's just like, oh, we hear a rule and it's like, oh, the rule's automatically made, like there's something we do, now we can't watch the movie in school. So it's like, so it's like, and especially because our teacher, like we, it was one of the movies we watched first and I can like, I'm out of it. I just think to, a couple of the movies I saw were very, very changing and I feel like it's important to keep it. So I think a lot of the kids would agree with me, but I think it's more like they didn't, we didn't know that we had a say necessarily. So I think it's good and I'm looking forward to working.
We're going to be their voice now. To raise now what you're hearing in the high school and kind of fill us in on those pieces too. So that'll be good.
Chloe's already been onboard. We had an onboard reporting meeting with her.
Oh, yeah, about lunches.
What's that?
Lunch. About lunch.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. We've already asked Chloe, we had an onboard meeting with Chloe to talk about some of the things about the function of a board and she was very attentive and participatory. And we also gave her some, some homework to start the meeting too. Yes.
I do want to say last year we went to the NISBA conference in Albany and we actually saw a presentation on student ex officio members and that was a really cool concept. And a few of us will be able to attend again this year for this conference and there's going to be a presentation again on student ex officio members. So that will be the end of July, beginning of August. So we'll be able to come back with some more information to what other districts are doing. Like I know one of the ones we saw last year, the board, the student member that was here though, would like have like a table in the cafeteria and gather questions or things from, from those students and then she would compile them or he or she and then bring them to the meeting or to the leadership. And it, so it was kind of like a.
Profile of.
Yeah, like a back and forth. So it's not just you sitting here getting everything, but you could also bring stuff to the table. So when we go again to this next conference, we'll be able to get some more information and see what's been working in other districts so we can mimic what is working. Anyone have any other new business or comments? Okay, can we get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion?
Second.